Yeah.
Mark and I.
Yeah.
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 We had six children.
It's half the team, or half the, uh, half of the team.
They didn't give us pads.
Yeah, just right on my agenda.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't let.
Didn't we pay our electric bill?
John's here.
Okay, John's walking up.
Yeah, it was last time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, with which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and social equal rights.
All right, welcome to the June 18th Fisher City Council. First of all, we want to celebrate an incredible feat. Would, uh, Coach Cherry, would you, uh, make your way up to the podium? We have some state champs here, if you don't see, we got some visitors today. Coach, if you want to share your story, especially, I really liked that part about the mileage, I think, between, is it Fisher's High School and Victory Field?
Yeah.
Just, just share, share whatever, go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, so eight years ago, we ca- we calculated the mileage from Fisher's High School to Victory Field and found out it was 24.59 miles, and so we began talking about that eight years ago as our motto in 2011. Um, and here we are eight years later, finally had a chance to make that trip for the state finals, and, uh, these guys behind me played incredible, and we were fortunate enough to win.
That's awesome, that's great. Well, can we, uh, give her, give them a huge round of applause for 2018, for a state champ? So, if you'd like, we'd like to have them come up and get a picture with the mayor.
Sure.
Is, well, do we have, where's Scott at?
I have a mayor.
We find him?
Can he come up?
I can, I can stand in right now, I'm not, I'm no good compared to him, but yeah, come on up, you're funny good.
Pretty awesome.
I did, I thought. Peak, across one too, right? You cross, one.
Yes.
Girls track, and Fisher's.
Yes.
That's awesome. Pretty impressive.
I'm gonna take pictures.
Oh, you're?
Mayor Fadness wants to catch your fastball.
I got, I got, I got, I got extra one now.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Nice job for everything.
Congratulations.
Yes.
You waited longer for us than you got to, you know, be up here, but, big key.
I can only stay for the whole meeting.
I gotta go eat.
I know.
All right, uh, Mayor Fadness, uh, you have a proclamation you'd like to share?
Yeah, actually, just want to share some context behind this proclamation, I'm not going to read the proclamation, I, instead, I'm going to add some context to, to why I felt this was important. Uh, with the recent, uh, gun violence in Noblesville High School, I had the opportunity after our public meeting the other day to meet with the Moms Demand Action Group, and, uh, we can all have lengthy debates, ideological debates about gun control, um, and what I do know for certain is, uh, regardless of what side you're on in that particular issue, uh, we probably won't see the issue resolved at the federal level anytime soon. Uh, but what we can do is, uh, advocate for things such as, if you have gun ownership, you also have gun responsibility, and, and one of the things that I thought was really, uh, well done by Moms Demand Action was this conversation around, uh, bringing a heightened awareness to the fact that if you have a gun in your home, you need to lock it up, and you need to be safe about it, and so when I, I was presented with the opportunity to really sit down and talk to them and find out what they were about, I definitely wanted to show support for their proclamation, and, uh, and that's what you see here, uh, tonight, and we look forward to continuing to work with them on, uh, important issues like gun safety, like gun responsibility, helping parents understand that they can have a conversation with another, uh, family, if your kid was going over there to stay overnight, there's nothing wrong with asking the question, hey, do you happen to have a firearm in your car or in your home, and is it secured? Uh, those are conversations that need to be had, so, uh, tonight, I just appreciate you guys taking this consideration, we will deliver the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Fadness. All right, moving on to, uh, presentations, we have service awards, uh, Chief Thompson, you ready to present?
Uh, good evening, council, and, uh, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for wearing your HSC royal blue shirt for the Fisher's High School picture tonight. Being a royal, I appreciate it. Um, I did go to the game Friday night, and what a phenomenal baseball game, and it, it was a lot of fun to see, uh, Fisher's, uh, earn that championship, and it was a hard-fought game. Um, I would like to call up Lieutenant Mike Johnson and, uh, Officer Scott Cale, please, so I can talk about them for a moment. These two have, uh, a few similarities beyond their hire date, so, um, they both have, they're both married, they both have three children, uh, first, I'd like to talk about, uh, Scott. So Scott's been married to Suzie for a, quite a while, they're eastside Indianapolis folks, and they have, uh, three kids, Cody, Megan, and Colleen. Um, Scott went into the US Army straight out of high school, and, uh, but he comes from a law enforcement family, his dad was with the Marion County Sheriff's Office, his stepmom, uh, his uncle, uh, Chief George Cale, uh, also comes from, uh, law enforcement, and so he was destined to come to, uh, law enforcement, we're really fortunate to have him here in Fisher's. Uh, Scott's had a varied career, uh, between patrol and investigations, um, he was, he's been a formal leader as a sergeant, but I think, more importantly, over the years, he's been an informal leader to many within our agency. Um, he's not only a mentor within the agency, but also outside of the agency, many, many kids know Scott because of his coaching, and, and my daughter was fortunate to play for, uh, Scott, uh, softball many years ago, but, and Scott even volunteers and coaches at Fisher's High School for the girls softball team there. Um, so Scott, we recognize you tonight for your 25 years of service, congratulations. Stay up here, because I know you're uncomfortable, and I kind of like that. Lieutenant Mike Johnson, really known as OJ in the community, hired on the same day as Scott, uh, started their careers together, Mike is married to Teresa, they have three kids, Michael, Ben, and Mitchell, they're all here, um, as you might see, there's a bit of an age difference between Mitchell and the other two, uh, Mike likes to keep it interesting in his house, um, but Mike chief, I didn't mean it that way.
Uh, strike that for a minute, please.
It's not me. Um, Mike comes from a long line of public safety as well, his dad was a, a police officer in Beach Grove, and chief of police of Beach Grove, uh, his brother is an IMPD officer, and he has a half-brother who's a firefighter, uh, down in Indianapolis, also an MMA fighter, uh, Chris Lights Out Light, all right? Um, so Mike is destined for public safety as well, um, he went to Ball State, and when he came to our agency, one of the things he wrote is that he wanted to get involved with department youth programs and reach into the home and school. Well, Mike has certainly accomplished that in his career, um, Mike is known as a DARE officer, uh, OJ, he's been teaching DARE since 1995, he's DARE Officer of the Year for the State of Indiana in 1999, he was nominated to the National DARE Officer of the Year, he's on the state training board, um, and he leads our school resource unit, and he, which has won many awards over the years, and obviously with recent events, has really taken on some more challenges. Um, Mike also started our accreditation for our agency, uh, did it in a very, um, non-intimidating way, taking on accreditation can be challenging, but Mike started it, and it has still continued to this day. So Mike, we appreciate your service, 25 years with the Fisher's Police Department, thank you, sir.
We've got our, moving, are you still?
Yep.
Awards, all right, keep going, yes.
But wait, there's more.
There's more.
For the record, Eric Pasl, Director of Public Works, here to, um, acknowledge George Cale on his 40th year of service to the community.
Wow.
Well, I was surprised to hear that George accepted the offer to come and do this, and I started wondering what kind of remarks I could generate that would live up to the standard of George's service to the community, and it got hard really quick to not turn this into a Dean Martin celebrity roast, and... Because we all have a story, or twelve, about George, and at the risk of everybody lined up out the door to tell a story, we'll move on. Um, for sure, um, George is the patriarch of the hired staff around here with 40 years of service that's unparalleled by anybody, um, he, I give him a hard time and tease him that he's got a PhD in curmudgeon, and he does, and he wears it like a badge of honor, but I tell you what, he, he knows the history of this community, he, he, he's a constant source of, of information, um, just until a year or two ago, when he was police chief, he had his hand in every single professional firefighter, or policeman, sorry.
Both.
Both, uh, that, uh, the police department had hired in their entire history, so he's still involved in the community, and I know he's retired from the, from the police force at this point, but he's spending his years now with the Department of Public Works down in our inventory control, and his attention to detail and his work ethic is unparalleled, and it's a good witness for our young staff in there. Please join me in welcoming George Cale to the table and presenting him with his award.
The only thing I'd like to say is, uh, thank you very much for allowing me to continue my service with the city of Fisher's, uh, we're having a lot of fun where we're at, we're in the process of, uh, movement, uh, moving to new building in September, so the challenge now is to figure out how we're going to get all that inventory up there, but it's a new destiny for me, and...
destiny for me and I love going there every day and I'm sure I'll see you around. Thank you very much for having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We save the best for last.
That's right. All right.
We're honored today to recognize Barbara Hathaway for 20 years of service. Barbara, come on up with your family. Nobody, everyone's scared to mess with Barb, so I'm going to take this opportunity to mess with her a little bit. Hi, Ellie. Barb started with the Fishers Department of Fire and Emergency Services on June 28th, 1998. She's got two Good Conduct Awards, a Human Commendation for Outstanding Performance in the year 2000, and a Civilian of the Year Award. Her husband is Scott. Scott is a Toledo firefighter with 30 years of service. Scott drives to Toledo every third day because Barb insists that she wants to live in Fishers. Six-year-old Ellie is their, is their granddaughter and she's like our fighter primer princess. We roll out the red carpet every time she visits. As a department head, we have certain valuable employees and we affectionately call those employees, this person's my right arm or my left arm, and they're indispensable. Barb falls right in the middle, in the heart of the organization. So please join me in thanking Barb for 20 years of dedicated service and many more. Picture? Picture, let's get a picture.
Picture?
Yes, she's going to take a picture. Why don't you take one with the mayor?
Chief Thompson coming up for the swearing in ceremony.
All right, first I'd like to tell you a little bit about our new officer, Ryan McAlip and his wife, Danae, and, and three girls live in Fishers. Ryan graduated from Taylor University with a bachelor's degree in biblical literature and he has a master's of divinity degree from the Denver Seminary. Prior to being hired with Fishers Police Department, he was a police officer for nearly three years with the Lakewood Police Department in Colorado. Ryan moved back to Fishers to be closer to his family and we are very fortunate that he chose Fishers as the place where he wanted to come to. So tonight, I'd like to swear in Ryan in front of his family, in front of the city. Ryan, if you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan McAlip, do solemnly swear.
I, Ryan McAlip, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Indiana.
The laws and ordinances of the city of Fishers.
Laws and ordinances of the cities of Fishers.
The rules and regulations of the Fishers Police Department.
The rules and regulations of the Fishers Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
The law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As a police officer to the best of my ability.
As a police officer to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Todd, if I could add one more announcement, I know we're dragging on here a little bit, but this is an important one. Today, I let the staff know that we're going to be making an exciting leadership addition to the leadership team. Elliot Holgren, who many of our employees know as the head of our Fleet Department and then over Business Solutions Group when he came back from a stint in Africa serving our country. He is going to step forward and be the Deputy Mayor of Administration and that will include leading our Human Resources Department, Information Technology Department, Controllers Department, Business Solutions Group, and Information Technology. So all of the departments that don't always get a lot of airtime here besides the Controllers' Office, but are critical for the operations of our internal organization. So we're excited to have Elliot in that leadership role and look forward to moving forward.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome aboard in your position. All right, moving on to Finance Committee Report, Finance Chair, Solar.
Yes, to provide, I'll provide a macro report on the macroeconomics, the topical discussions within the community, within the committee meeting and then the agenda items for voting. Banks have reduced their quarterly municipal bonds holding for the first time in nine years, a sign of how much US tax rules reduce the demand for municipal debt from state and local governments. Municipal securities held by US Chartered Banks Institutions fell in the first quarter by nearly $16 billion. With the lower corporate tax rate, it makes less sense to buy tax exempt bonds. The reduced appeal of municipal debt has the potential to drive up borrowing cost for the state and local governments. A widely followed municipal bond index fell more than, more in the first three months of this year than in any quarter in the past 15 years. We're still kind of waiting on this to, for the market to flush a lot of this out. We're hoping that rates do not rise too much as the banks are required to hold what we call highly liquid assets under the Frank Dodd Act and may be required to, munis will be more beneficial to them to purchase. As for topical discussions within the committee meeting, extra meetings are being calendared to accommodate extra attention that is needed during the budget season. Please stay tuned as these dates will be distributed by the administration. The city judge and clerk provided mid-year updates on their budgets. The committee voted to provide the nonprofit committee with $356,500. This is the same amount as last year, however, given that this is expected to be a tight budget year, this could be decreased. The committee discussed neighborhood matching grant program and would like for the nonprofit committee to consider possibly increasing the money in the grant program as we have many neighborhoods that have projects that they need assistance with. The committee reviewed the 457 matching employee benefit election. 57.4% of eligible employees are maxing out the benefit with a participation rate of 74%. The committee discussed the 2017 Fishers Certified Technology Park revenue. The city received $450,000 in CPT, in CTP revenue. As part of the budgeting process, the mayor reviewed the highlights of the fiscal plan with the committee, a discussion regarding the rising healthcare and the actions the administration are taking to reduce and control these costs. The agenda items, the controller has requested additional appropriations from the local option income taxes. This request was approved by the committee and is forwarded to the council with a recommendation for approval.
All right, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Moving on to the consent agenda, last month, the council voted on two ordinances related to bonds for the yard project, the retail project, and the garage. Both ordinances received unanimous approval with one abstention. Since the last meeting, some council members have expressed their concern with a procedural deficiency regarding the suspension of the rules for both matters, where one council member abstained from the vote to suspend the rules on both matters. The city's legal council, bond council, and outside council have all confirmed that the action taken was appropriate and that the votes could properly stand as they were made last month. However, out of abundance of caution, because we are a transparent government, I am going to ask the council to amend the minutes from last month's meeting, in particular, items eight and nine on last month's agenda, to restate that ordinance 052118B requests to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Fishers taxable Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series 2018A only had first reading. Likewise, I'll make amendment to the minutes to reflect that the ordinance 052118C requests to introduce and adopt ordinance approving issuance of Economic Development Revenue Bonds Series 2018C only had first reading. With that, I will make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Pete. Motion by Todd, second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. I will make an amendment at the end of the meeting to add both of these ordinances back onto the agenda for a final reading so that any perceived procedural deficiency can be remedied. With that, Chris, do, do we need to make a motion then to approve?
The motion would be to approve the minutes as previously amended.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with noted amendments.
Motion by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, thank you, everyone. All right, moving on to number seven, item R061818B.
Good evening, council members. For the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development. I've got a few items for you here today, we'll hopefully get through them fairly quickly. The first is a confirmatory resolution for the Fishers Ellipse Project. As everyone remembers, we had a couple projects just north of the amphitheater. Project agreements have been unanimously voted on and supported. Last month, we had a declaratory resolution to create an economic revitalization area for both of those projects and procedurally, this is step two, the confirmatory resolution. I would ask that we hold a public hearing and then approve the resolution confirming the ERA for the Fishers Ellipse Project.
All right, so I'll open, open the floor for the public hearing input session. Anyone wishing to make a statement, please come forward, state your name and address. For the record, you will have three minutes to speak. With that, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from council? You have a motion? Motion to approve?
Yeah, I'm abstaining in this one, guys, so you get to jump in.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by David, second by Selena. All those in favor? Aye. Any, any noes? No? And abstain?
I'm abstaining as well.
All right, so John and Pete are abstaining. Thank you. Moving on to R061818C, request approved resolution approving SB1.
So as part of the project agreement with the Fishers Ellipse LLC project that I just mentioned north of the amphitheater, the process for this also requires an approval for the statement of benefits for the development company as part of the tax abatement. So I would ask that we approve the resolution. There was a question about page two, I just wanted to reiterate that the way that our process works is since the project agreement has already been voted on and approved by the council, all of the notes, details, financials have been viewed, voted on, and considered. And then page one also reiterates what the company is responsible for, again, their statement of benefits. Procedurally, the second page is something that the city traditionally fills out once the vote has taken place and been approved. So that's why page two appears blank in the agenda. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Eric, second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes? Thank you.
Abstain.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Abstain Pete and John abstain. All right, moving on to R061818D.
This resolution is to approve the confirmatory resolution for the second parcel north of the amphitheater that we had discussed previously. This would be a 20,000 square foot Class A office building. The abatement schedule for that project is 100 in year one, 80% in year two, 60 in year three, 40 in year four, 20 in year five. And again, this is procedurally step two of the ERA. Last month, we had the declaratory, this month, we do the confirmatory and I would request a public hearing to hear the confirmatory resolution and then request council approve.
Thank you, Brandon. I'll open the floor for public hearing. Any of those wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak. See no one stepping forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Motion to approve item nine.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes. Moving on to R061818E.
This item is the statement of benefits approval for AMP Northwest, the project, again, to the west of the two project, or the two parcels. Again, just as far as procedure goes, the statement of benefits is filled out by the developer, just once again reaffirming the tax abatement schedule that everyone has voted on during the project agreement and then last month's confirmatory, I'm sorry, declaratory resolution, this month's confirmatory, would ask that council accept and approve the resolution to approve SB1s for AMP Northwest LLC.
Any questions from council?
Motion to approve item 10.
Motion to approve by Pete.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to R061818F.
Todd, on this item, we were at the break, we were able to talk to Jennifer Messer, who's done the work on this particular issue. Normally, we, we've waited to get to the point where we do a legal description where we're closer to closing to make sure these projects move forward in the instance that it may not go through and then we've spent a lot of money. But if there's a concern about transferring this from the city to the redevelopment commission right now, we can table this and wait till we get further down the line in the development process and bring it back with a legal description. So there's, there's no sense of urgency tonight. She was just trying to be proactive to get this move from city to redevelopment commission, but we can, we can hold off on this one, table it, and we'll bring it back when we have the legal description developed, so.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion to table by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I hope no one has abstained from that. All right, it's tabled, thank you. Moving on to R061818G.
Yes, this is the project agreement amendment for Knowledge Services. As council probably recalls, the city entered into a project agreement with Knowledge Services last year where Knowledge Services desires to invest not less than $6.7 million in developing and constructing one or more office buildings along the 69 corridor. The item to be amended today was the date by which they would need to commence construction. Currently, the agreement states that they have to commence construction before December 31st, 2018. Given that this is the first time they've built a building, it's just taken them a little bit longer to pick a team to help them design the building, design the site. So it's not a substantial delay, but just to make sure the project is in compliance with the project agreement, we'd ask for an amendment to allow them to commence construction to March 31st, 2019. So just a couple of months' extension for this project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
And a question on this, it's marked for public hearing on the council action form, not on the agenda, so I don't know if that's a, I need to open it up for public hearing.
This is not requiring a public hearing?
I'm going to make a motion to approve item 12.
Any, any questions or comments from council? All right, motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion passes.
I'll be right back, I'm going to.
Taking a coffee break or you?
You know, I'm always on top of it when it comes to technology. Speaking of technology, HG8939 Technology LLC has acquired property generally known as 8939 Technology Drive in Fishers. This was previously owned by Mr. DeTillo. The building has had new ownership and some new occupants. The project, the project's has always been waiting for redevelopment when the time was right and developers ready to make that investment. and developers ready to make that investment now. The property owner would enter into an agreement with the city to develop a approximately 30,000-square-foot office building, which you see here. And this would add needed office space to our downtown office inventory. We honestly can't build it fast enough for the demand that we have for people wanting to locate their business and bring their talented workforce into our nickel plate downtown district. So this would be another fantastic opportunity to redevelop what was a building kind of ready for a facelift. The other great part about this project is it will be at the corner of Lantern and Technology Drive, just across the street from Meyer Nagum. As you all know, we have the Certified Tech Park that encompasses the Technology Drive area. This would be a gateway project, approximately $8.5 million investment by the developer onto the land and into the building to really create a sense of place and a sense of investment for the Certified Tech Park. And we anticipate that will only be a catalyst for more redevelopment. The other really neat thing about this site is it backs up right to the Nickel Plate Trail. So the development would be capturing a tremendous landscape item. I think that's the nicest euphemism I've ever heard of, the beautiful trail that we're going to put. It's a wonderful thing to look back out of your back window on, but that'll be available to them as well. So the project contemplates the developer would have 30 months to pre-lease the project. In exchange, if they're able to land prospective tenants in the building within that 30-month period, the city would provide $2 million worth of bonds to help offset development costs, as well as a $50,000 utility allowance and a waiver of impact fees. Another important detail about this project is if the developer were to sell the building within the first five years of substantial completion, there would be a profit share with the city. So I think that's something that is new, that we think is appropriate. If we're able to put public dollars into a project and it's successful, the city should be entitled to a share of the fruits of that labor. So that's another interesting and new component of this project. With that, we would also dedicate the old Technology Drive that was relocated along the tracks and snaked back around to the other side of the property. That land is still a public right-of-way. So the city would dedicate that approximately .4 acres to the project to allow the space and land necessary to develop, build, and park this project, as well as two smaller parcels, approximately .21 and .18 acres respectively, that are just on either side of the new road that snakes through a piece of land that the city currently is doing nothing more than mowing right now. So that would be an elevated use for the current land. So that transfer of property would also take place if and only if there was a building to be built based on the developer bringing pre-leasing up. And then there's also clawbacks should the developer stall out in development. So we believe we have all the appropriate city protections in place for this deal, and we're excited to get it moving. I've already heard a few people that were aware of the imminent redevelopment express interest in learning more about this project. So I'm very excited to announce this and get it going. And with that, happy to answer any questions council may have, and we respectfully request to approve resolution.
All right, any questions, comments from council? Questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete to approve, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to R-061818I.
This item is an amendment to the plan for the yard allocation area. The redevelopment commission and plan commission have approved amendments to the plan for the yard TIF allocation area to provide for the multifamily and supporting garage project and change the base assessment date to January 1st, 2018. The resolution provides the council's approval. I would request that we suspend the rules and approve resolution. And then also, the redevelopment commission will hold a public hearing and consider its final approval in July.
Okay, any questions or comments from council?
Clarify, you're suggesting suspending the rules of the number of readings? Is this back to the same issue?
I don't, this is a resolution for the allocation area. We can just straight vote on this?
So why are we suspending rules?
We're not going to suspend the rules.
Just want to make sure I heard that correctly. Yeah, I want to make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Any other comments? I just want to make sure I didn't cut anybody off. Any other comments? Okay, motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One.
Rich abstains. All right, motion passes. Moving on to R-061818J.
This item would approve the lease between the RDC and the Town Hall Building Corp. for the yard garage. The lease between Fishers Town Hall Building Corp. as lesser and Fishers Redevelopment Commission and the developer as less ease provides for the lease of a parking garage to support a separate additional project in the yard consisting of the multifamily building. A portion of the cost of the garage will be paid within the proceeds of bonds to be issued by the city and payable from the lease rentals under said lease. The lease rentals under the lease will be paid with tax increment revenues and to the extent necessary, property taxes. Resolution provides council's required approval of the lease. The bonds issued by the city payable from the lease, lease rentals under the lease are payable from tax increment revenues as source of funds. The bonds will be issued later this summer. With that, happy to answer any questions and would respectfully request approval of the resolution.
Okay, any questions or comments from council?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion by Eric, second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Rich abstains. All right, motion passes. Thank you for that, that noise there, Brandon. Moving on to R-061818A.
All right, for the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The resolution before you is a request for an additional appropriation of local option income taxes in the amount of 1.7 million. The local option income tax fund was created in 2016 from the special distribution received by the city. And as part of that requirement, 75% of the special distribution had to go to road projects. And so during the year, we've identified a need for some additional road projects and costs relating to 136th and Southeastern Parkway. And some work on South Street are just two of the projects that this additional appropriation would pay for. If anybody has any questions, I'll answer them. If not, I'll step aside for the public hearing.
So in the primary meeting, you mentioned future dispersments below it?
Yes, so... No, no. So, yes, so the 2016 special distribution we received had the requirement that 75% of your distribution had to go to road projects and resurfacing. We just received a 2018 distribution, and that does not have the same requirement. So this was the only distribution that has that requirement was the 2016 one. Yes, the 18 one, yeah, yes.
All right, any other questions before I open up for public hearing? All right, I'll open up for public hearing. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one stepping forward. I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on to 061818.
Good evening. Tony Begato, Director of Planning and Zoning. The item before you is annexation of a property known as Geist Manor. If the council recalls, the PUD was approved by both Plan Commission, recommended approval by Plan Commission and City Council that had the dedication of the parkland to the south along Florida Road and 113th Street. Again, as part of the department's goals, whenever we have the ability to require annexation as part of a PUD or have the opportunity, we will do so, and this is just part of that. So this property will come into annexation before they start construction. And they'll have to open a public hearing and have two readings available for any questions.
So any questions, council? I'll open up for public hearing. Any of those wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak. See no one stepping forward. I'll close the public hearing.
Have first and second reading.
Motion by Pete for first and second reading.
Is it a motion or we just have to acknowledge the fact?
Good with that? We're good with that?
Just acknowledge it.
All right, 061818A.
Good evening. For the record, Taylor Navarre with the Planning and Zoning Department. The item before you tonight is a request to vacate city right-of-way of the old 126th Street. This is part of the Vive Exterior Design redevelopment project that we've seen a couple times come through for a rezone for their PUD, as well as the communications utility facility on the eastern portion of the site. The petitioner is looking to vacate the strip that runs south along the southern border of the property. Extent of the vacation is shown here in green, as well as the exhibit that was provided in all of the packet. The Vive owner will take sole ownership of the right-of-way. Typically, it's split 50/50 with the adjacent property owners, but they're working on an agreement with the property owner to the south, the U Store, to take full ownership and responsibility of this right-of-way. So with that, again, this is the overall concept plan of the Vive Exterior Design site. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions, council? Well, hold on, we got a public hearing. Open the floor for public hearing. Any of those wishing to speak? Step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. See no one stepping forward. I'll close the public hearing now. Now you have the...
Not a motion, just have first reading.
First reading, all right.
I think Taylor was requesting...
Do you want to suspend the rules? So, well, okay, any...
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Eric, motion to suspend the rules, second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now a motion to approve. Eric with a motion. Second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to 052118D.
Good evening, council. Lindsay Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here on second and third reading of the excavation permit ordinance. Since I was here last month, we've had two small changes that we're proposing for second and third reading. One is in the application for the right-of-way permit to require the applicant to be a member of Indiana 811. And then the other change is a Scrivener's error in 94.13A to delete that section. But other than that, everything has stayed the same since first reading. I have not had any feedback from the public on this one. And so I would propose that it goes in the way it's written. And I am not asking to suspend the rules.
So we can approve this. It says second reading. Just want to make sure it's okay to approve.
Yeah, so what, I mean, we've traditionally done is we've suspended the rules on things that have been presented for second and third reading as well, so let's go ahead and do that.
Suspend the rules.
And then vote on it.
All right, first of all, any questions or comments from council?
Appreciate the deadline for any more public rules.
Sure.
Motion to suspend.
Okay, Pete with a motion to suspend, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion to approve by Pete, second by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on, 052118E.
For the record, Lindsay Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here probably just on second reading of this one tonight because I think we have a few changes maybe to bring back. But since first reading, we did have a few comments from the public and some feedback. So we've incorporated some of those into this proposed draft. Those changes would include addressing the roadway so that it's just a primary or secondary arterial road within the city of Fishers, so that would not include residential. I know there was some concern about wearing helmets on residential streets, so that would take out that requirement of wearing a helmet on a residential street. We've also deleted Section 73.11H, requiring young children to basically, you know, stay off the road and only able to cross at sidewalks. I met with Chief Thompson, and based on the public feedback and after meeting with Chief Thompson, it didn't seem to be a real concern. So we went ahead and deleted that section. And then we also changed in 73.11E2 to allow any city department to change the sign, not just the police department. Last time I was here, you had asked if Chief Thompson had had a chance to review this. He did on first reading. I also sent him these changes. He's here tonight if you have any questions on enforcement. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I guess my problem, and Mitch, maybe you can answer these, I have no earthly idea how you're going to enforce this whatsoever. The other side of it is I have a hard time saying that we're going to go ahead and put a helmet law in place for a bicycle, but yet you don't need to ride a motorcycle with a helmet on, right? So there's a lot of ambiguity here that's going on. You get kids on non-artificial streets or non-streets that can now ride where they want, how they want, without a helmet reflective gear, but when they go out on this other street, now they miraculously need to put a helmet on and reflective gear and all this. To me, it's just a, I just think we're an overreach on this one, I really do. I just think we're adding an ordinance which is going to be virtually impossible to go ahead and enforce. You know, I don't really see what the overall problem is in the community other than a couple of people got honked off at some bike riders, okay, because they were going down the road and, you know, maybe slowing them up for a minute or two. So my opinion here is I'm not really sure what kind of changes we can make, unless you convince me otherwise that this is a really good thing to do for the community because in my mind, we're just adding another ordinance to a myriad of other things that we don't really need to have.
I think this was brought forth by the bicycle community because they wanted the three-foot passing rule, which is also a very difficult to enforce because it's very subjective from a view of an officer traveling down the road. The conversations then stemmed around that there is technology out there, and we know the biking community wears GoPro cameras and things of that nature. So we're envisioning that in the future that there would be opportunities to enforce based on that. Over the years, we have the occasional bicyclist that struck. That's an obvious violation of the three-foot passing rule that we could then enforce that. The conversations then turned to that we do get a lot of... It's fair to say that it's more common that we get complaints against bicyclists than we do have bicyclists that complain about motorists. So there was an ask for a balance of an ordinance that also just relays what are some of the common themes that we would look for in bicyclists, meaning that they obey Indiana laws as they're required to if they're traveling down the road. Reflective gear is just a good idea, and the ordinance reads reflective on the bicycle or the person. All bicycles typically come with reflective gear on them. So bicycles, unless they're modified, would be in compliance with the ordinance straight away. The discussion about the child and the age thing, common sense prevails for us from a law enforcement perspective in that if we see a young kid traveling down 116th Street, doesn't matter if there's an ordinance or not, we're going to stop, talk to them, and tell them to get out of the street to be safe in that manner. The helmet issue for me is really a policy decision of the council. I am a bicyclist, I'm a motorcyclist, I think people make conscious decisions. And I liken things to, I remember when seatbelt law was passed, there was a lot of people talking about the government shouldn't tell me whether or not I have to wear a seatbelt. But the overarching theme, I think, was that there was a problem in society in which people were not buckled up that were causing, or that were involved in crashes and which caused injury that could have been prevented. And it was costing taxpayers a lot of money because of that. That's why seatbelt laws were put in place. The helmet, I think helmets make common sense, but I'm not going to weigh in on whether or not it should be an ordinance of the city of Fishers. That, to me, is up to you folks. I can tell you that we have had bicyclists hit that have had serious injuries, but they're very, very few and far between.
Any other questions or comments?
I just want to clarify what you said earlier, Lindsay. I mean, you said that's been amended now to, to take out the helmet requirement, is that correct?
Just on residential streets. So, if you're on like 116th Street, then yeah, the helmet would still be required.
I mean, I guess the way I view it is, I mean, I think this is kind of a best practices situation. I don't think there's an expectation, you know, on enforcement unless there's abuse, which, you know, is probably going to be the case at some point, but I don't have a problem with it. I, I know that there were, I just wanted to make sure whatever the changes are get communicated, because I've been copied as well from some of the people with concerns, so.
What, the questions I had is how, how would this ordinance be different than, say, other cities in Hamilton County? I wasn't sure how we compare what other cities are doing, just as a way to kind of have a guide of what they've done.
Yeah. So, we would be the only community with a helmet requirement, but there's only one, maybe two other communities in this area, well, Indy has one too, that have a bicycle ordinance in place, period, so. But yes, the helmet requirement, I have not seen that in any other ordinance in this area.
Are people asking for the helmet requirement to not be applicable anywhere? Or are they accepting the residential requirement?
I, I have actually had feedback for both. Some people are fine with the arterial streets and leaving the residents alone, and then some are saying they don't want any helmet law at all, so, you know, as Chief Thompson said, it's really a policy decision. It's there if you want it. If not, we can certainly make a change and bring it back for third reading.
Options are table or just make a motion for second reading? Motion for second, okay. Anyone want to make?
I put it a little, this is an awareness issue, particularly with the passing, with the passing rules, right? Awareness and courtesy. And we find it would be a place for playground offenders, right? I mean, that's the intention of it.
Yeah, but they, but current verbiage has the helmet.
Right. That's a separate issue.
Right.
And I'm fine with taking that, but for the rest of it, we're okay with, right? Or what?
I guess, I guess here's, here's, Mitch, how much problem do we really have with this? Is this an overreaching problem in, in our community?
No.
Right, okay. That's, so we need to make a, a decision, and we're at second reading. If we give it a second reading, they can come back and address the comments that we've made, and bring it back next month for a third and final reading, and then we get to vote whether we want it or not, right? I think at that point, that's basically where we're coming. So, if there's more comments on this, you know, I would suggest we have second reading and let them go back and see if they want to craft something back.
I would agree.
And then let them come back, and then we'll take a final vote on, on third reading next month.
I would agree with Pete.
Maybe an awareness campaign initially is more fruitful than just coming out and saying we're going to have this ordinance, it being, you know, unaffected.
Could be one of those suggestions to come at the third reading if you choose not to approve that, right? In other words, you say, instead of doing that, we'll vote that down, and we'll do an awareness campaign through PR and everybody else to do that. That can be done at that point, I think, but I'm not sure.
Well, and, and would it be appropriate, and, and I would really rely on Lindsay and so forth to say, can we just have an ordinance that the city of Fishers believes in the safety of its citizens and would strongly encourage that all safety features of a bicycle be used, including appropriate wear of a helmet or something like that? So, to where it's not a law, but rather, it's a strong recommendation that's worded within the ordinance, just as a goodwill gesture on both ends.
Yeah, I just don't know that that would be an ordinance.
No, I mean.
Be more like a resolution.
Right. Right. Well, true. Right.
Do I, is there a?
Second reading.
Motion for a second reading. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Anybody?
I think we just have to acknowledge second.
Just acknowledge second reading? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 061818B.
Good evening, Council President Zimmerman. Members of the council for the record, Chris Griesel, attorney for the city of Fishers. I'm here tonight on just a, a matter of administrative cleanup regarding the city's stormwater utility. So, Indiana law provides municipalities with multiple paths to managing its stormwater utility. One way is to create a Department of Stormwater Management pursuant to Indiana Code 8-1.5-5, which creates a separate stormwater district, which is a special taxing unit, and includes a separate board of governance. Another way which the city utilizes is to operate its stormwater utility using the powers that it has under the Municipal Sewerage Works Act. So, in other words, the city operates and governs its stormwater utility in much the same degree that it does with its storm, or with its wastewater facility. Although the city has operated its stormwater utility pursuant to the Sewerage Works Act, it was recently discovered that the city's transition ordinance, which was adopted in 2014, prior to the city's enactment, contains some references to the Department of Stormwater Management that we'd like to clean up. So, I'm simply asking the council to repeal certain city codes. It's 32.90, 32.91, and 32.92, which reference the Department of Stormwater Management, and would ask that you suspend the rules and vote on first reading. Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any, any questions or comments from council?
Motion to suspend.
Okay. Motion by Pete, second by Eric to suspend. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion to approve on.
Motion by Pete to approve, second by Selena. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving on, motion passes. Moving on to new business, any other unfinished new business?
You were adding two items, weren't you?
Um.
Were you adding two?
Let's see, hold on.
Were adding back in the two yard agreements?
Yes, that's what I'm, so for the new business, I'm going to make a motion to add ordinance 052118B, a request to approve an ordinance authorizing the city of Fishers taxable economic development revenue bonds, Series 2018A, for final reading. I make that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. And then, motion to add ordinance 0, oh, go ahead.
Before you do that, you can go ahead and take the vote now on that ordinance before we move to the next one.
So, we are second and third reading? We still need to suspend?
Let's go ahead and do that.
Okay. So, I'm going to make a motion on Todd's add that we just approved and add to the agenda, make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on second reading.
That's correct. And we'll, we'll uniformly, if it's in your purview, to vote to suspend the rules, and then we'll take the vote.
So, okay, so we're mo- motion to suspend the rules, and that's, and that's on the first item.
On the first one, second reading.
Okay. So, motion by Pete, second by Selena to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?